At this time Commissioner Cutler is our latest in the hearing, please.
Shall we pray?
Dear Heavenly Father, Creator of heaven and earth, come to you tonight to ask your guidance on the decisions we are about to make. We ask your blessing on Caducea County to all those who live there and all those who serve it. And just Lord, we pray for tonight, we pray for the United States of America. May you bless us and guide us. In your heavenly name we pray.
Salute. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
At this time we're going off with Commissioner Cutler here.
Mr. Chairman and Board Members, the purpose of the public hearing is for the board to receive public comment on a proposed amendment to the county's Unified Development Code, or UDC. The UDC is what was adopted a few years back that replaced our zoning development ordinance. The purpose of the proposed amendment is to add a couple of definitions. They would be a definition of what's called a host home, which is something that is recognized and authorized under state law. And it's essentially a home where an individual houses one or two persons that they're not related to, who are adults that have disabilities, and they essentially provide foster care for these adults through a contract with the state of Georgia or one of its agencies. The proposed amendment would add a definition of host home, as I said, which is defined under state law, and would also include a host home in the definition of what is a permitted family under our ordinance. Under our current ordinance, not more than four people who are unrelated can live together and be considered a single family, so get four roommates in a house and such. The reason for this proposed amendment is it is one of the conditions of the voluntary compliance agreement that the board entered into, excuse me, HUD, back in, excuse me, November of last year. We agreed that we would incorporate this definition into our UDC. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Is there anyone here that has any questions or comments on this particular matter? Close the public hearing at this time. I think we do have some agendas that are going to be removed as well. Oh, I'm sorry. Clark, tell me.
Mr. Wong.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Chairman Henry.
Here.
Mr. Cutler.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you. But this time, let's set the agenda. What items are we removing tonight?
Lee, we are going to remove the proposed acceptance of a donation from the First Volunteer Bank. I think the presenter is ill. And we're also going to remove the proposed approval of a letter of support with the Nature Conservancy. And as I understand it, we will add executive session for personnel, legal, and proposed land acquisition.
You want to have anything else? Do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So.
Say.
All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. This time, does everyone have a chance to look over our minutes from the January 15th meeting? And if so, can I get a motion to approve the minutes as of this? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye. Moving on to public appearance, if we've had five minutes to speak, I would appreciate if there is no public attacks on any people. We're going to act respectful to each other, not call anybody liars or cheats or drop the f- words, even if it's just any window. So if anybody would like to speak and have five minutes of being involved, we'd be more than happy to have them. And then when it is our turn to speak, as Commissioners, and the meeting is being conducted, I want no talking in the audience because that is everybody else's turn and the people present. So let's try to keep a little level of decorum tonight. Mr. Johnson, you want to speak?
My name is Ray Johnson, Little Keystone, Rhode Island, Georgia. I just want to thank the board for putting me on this. I give you the opportunity on the board, and I do hope that I can serve the county well and everything else. And just have one more thing to add, I do hope y'all really can share about this call. And really thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your service. Anybody else want to speak? Ma'am, you want to go first?
I do.
Three. Lady first.
Oh, ladies first.
You said that, I did.
I know it, and I don't take offense at it either. It gives me senior discounts everywhere I go. I want you all to know that I have nothing against you personally. I, you know, I will speak to all of you. I like every one of you as people, as human beings. I just happen to have a problem with how you're running this county and the money you're spending. And I realize we have two new Commissioners, so, you know, don't take this personally either. I'd like to start off by saying that the transportation tax you voted to put on a ballot for March the 19th, and is the only issue on the ballot, will cost the taxpayers an estimated $17,600. If this issue had been put on one of the ballots last year when we had three elections, this cost could have been avoided. This is just one small example that our Commissioners are wasting our tax money and ignoring basic needs of the taxpayers. So why should we even consider giving more money if they cannot manage the county finances and live within our means? There are many taxpayers in this county who are working two or three jobs trying to make ends meet. On top of that, you expect them to vote to pay another one cent, a total of eight cents on the dollar, for everything they buy. Give me a break. This may not seem like much to you, but it does add up. And please do not threaten us with property tax increases and the fact that out-of-county people will come here to shop. You've already beat that one in the ground. You may be surprised that out-of-county shoppers may dwindle, especially those in Chattanooga, if they know they will have to pay eight cents in sales tax. Theirs is nine and a quarter, which is only one and a quarter cents difference. You have the privilege of full benefits, including full medical benefits for your whole family. Many of our county taxpayers don't have this privilege and have to pay a lot to obtain medical benefits. You seem to forget that you're only part-time related officials, not full-time employees of a company. I also think that sometimes you forget who you're working for, us. Hopefully the word will get out as to what you're trying to do. If you stop buying $500,000 houses with a swimming pool for the fire department, then have to go to the extra expense to renovate it, you might have the money to repair roads. Maybe the pool should be open to the public to help pay for the building since it's our tax money. Regarding the new Ford Edge vehicle you plan to purchase, I presume this vehicle is for the county manager since that department isn't one requesting it. To my knowledge, we have never purchased a special vehicle for any other county manager. Why are we doing it now? The approximately $42,000 for this vehicle could be applied to upkeep the roads. The county should not be wasting money by purchasing new expensive vehicles for anyone in our county government. I think you people are spending out of control with spending our money, such as buying expensive houses, vehicles, and land acquisition. Who will keep up when this vehicle is checked out and checked back in? I know that there must be other cars in the county available for the county manager to drive. What about leasing? I would love coming before you Commissioners to request anything I wanted and be able to get it. That is not likely to happen. However, it is mine and others' tax money you're wasting. You do not have my approval to spend the way you are doing.
Who else would like to speak? Mr. Harris.
Well said, Clarice. I agree with everything you said. I'm sorry the Chairman of the Commissioners is a little upset tonight, but we come here to exercise our First Amendment right, as it is the way it's supposed to be. I couldn't agree more with anybody than Clarice. I think it's a disgrace. The roads around here, the potholes are a disgrace. You can't even get those fixed. They can't cost a lot of money. As far as the county manager getting a car, I really personally don't have an issue with that. You pay the last scandal, $500 a month, a guy that shouldn't have been here, so give him a car allowance of $500 a month, which is more than cover a $40,000 car. And I also don't like the threat of property tax increases. Where I come from, they call that extortion, when you threaten somebody to get something. That's pretty well. Oh, and also, I take issue with appointing Ray Johnson on the Economic Development Board. It's like you're trying to keep your buddy in politics. He got voted out of the job. The people didn't want him as a Commissioner, so why do they want him on the Board of Economic Developments? It's like you're trying to play the old buddy system. We'll keep our buddy close by, maybe next election, maybe something else, but I don't think he should be on it. The people of Caducea County have spoke, and that's how I feel. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak, Roger?
Roger Nelson, resident of Caducea County. Just a comment about something that's been tabled and that gets more thought to, and that is on that nature of conservancy of the property at Graysville Ridge and the dam. I would just hope that it's been reviewed, or will be reviewed, for its historical significance, and that as you look at that, that you look, maybe with Bill Clark and the Caducea Historical Society to preserve that as well as the canoe launch type of program. Bill has described the history of that area over there, about Lime Kill, or more than just the dam and the hill over there. There's a Lime Kill history in there, there's still remnants of the Lime Kill that's there way into the 1800s. So there's a lot of other things that are there. So as you look at that area and everything, I hopefully nothing would... When I see something later that was part of that agenda, the possible removal of the dam or modifications was also... Sure, it'd be a good idea to figure out how to get locks or something to get fish and other wildlife upstream and things like that, but as far as removing the dam itself and changing any historical things that would be with that, I hope you look at that very closely. I also hope that as you do that, if you declare that 25 acres as a nature conservancy, that that wouldn't impact something that I hope is within the next 20-year plan or 50-year plan, and that is the Graysville Ridge overpass, if over that. So if, I hope you look at that, overpass, do a minimal amount of engineering on it to consider, is it even feasible? How could it be done? Can you save CSX four, five, six million dollars from doing a railroad bypass area between here and Tunnel Hill that they've considered for years, which they haven't funded? But is there anything that's possible for that overpass to be engineered? You wouldn't want to put it into a conservative area where you couldn't put a pier or a bridge and get through that area. And there's, I think there's a lot of options for that, but I say it's 20 years or 50 years down the road, while I'm standing here, if they're trying to help save it. So, but I would ask that you look at it from a historical point of view before you act or even support that thing. And certainly have no objection to the nature conservancy of Georgia here, as it is spending their money, but I do certainly object to spending taxpayer money to declare that. I mean, I have to offer support for a fundraiser for people to support it from a historical point of view, that not with a few splosh of money or with a few little splosh of money, but do consider, I hope, the historical value of it. Thank you, Roger.
Anybody else want to speak?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Phil Swims, and I live in this county. I go along with what Roger said, because however, I have a problem with what I talked to y'all about that was on Facebook, about other city council people already in the motion of using this T-tags for that very purpose, and we're all against that. I mean, she was out there putting, she was working with you all, and use that T-tags to make bike trails and walking paths and things like that. Well, that is not their place. That is your all's place to make decisions about what we're going to do with this money. And in my opinion, y'all started out talking about roads with this tax, and it should not go for anything else but the roads, because that is your man. And the more we build here, the more roads are going to hit you just common sense. Maybe y'all lose touch with common sense when you get elected. Some of you do, some of you don't. But it's common sense, the more traffic you've got, the more roads are going to get worn. And somebody at some point needs to call a mortuary or a little about just own building and pulling. At some point, if you make somebody mad for two years, at least the roads are not torn out, and things are not doing haywire, and people are not getting storm water in their yards. So that's what I would ask in this tax, we're not for it, and we're especially not for other people going to use it for bike trails and greenways like the nature conservancy. And see, before this came out tonight, that was on Facebook three weeks ago, so I know you had to be discussing something, because we're all not done out here. So thank you very much.
Anybody else want to speak?
My name's Sam Martin, and I live in the county. Just a few things I want to bring up to your attention if you guys will please consider it. My road seven years ago was the project of a splotched project. They were putting in sewers on my road. And they were supposed to repair the road. Everything was supposed to look really nice, better than when they first destroyed it, and it still looks like junk. So my confidence in any splotched project is really low. I don't believe you guys really come up with good projects and finish it like it's supposed to, because I still live on a road that's got potholes and bumps, and the city will come in, and there'll be a water leak, and they'll dig the road up, and they'll fix it, and they just patch it with. It was terrible. And it was an expensive project on Caducea Station. It was a terrible splotched project. I know they needed a sewer, but I don't have a lot of confidence in splotches. Number two, the problem I have with T-splotches typically in this county, when we have a splotched tax, it's a one-cent tax. And I think in everyone's mind, when T-splotch was proposed, at least it was for me, I was thinking it was going to be another penny tax, when it's actually an actual percent tax, which, when you look at it in the context, that increases our sales tax by 14%. If I went to the bank and wanted to borrow $10,000 for something, I would have to be very specific with the bank, exactly what I was going to use that money for. And I feel like the Commissioners, if they expect us to approve a T-splotch, they need to be very specific what roads you want to repair, specifically what you want to do with the money. I feel like it's all been kind of balled up into a vague project, and I have a really big problem with that. We already pay state income taxes. Increasing the sales tax is a big hit. Threatening to increase property taxes, when my property taxes have already gone up three years in a row, is just ugly. You just don't do that. And I'm a farmer, and I'll be honest with you, if I didn't have a farm and have land that I just loved, I would pack everything up and I would move over to Tennessee. Even though their sales tax is higher, they don't deal with the state income taxes, and they don't deal with some of the other parts that the state of Georgia throws at us. So I feel like, at the very least, you could give us a specific list of what you want the tax to pay for. And I also feel like consideration, it would be nice if you would actually wait and put this on the November ballot. It would save the county money for the special ballot plus typically people are more aware of votes and elections and things of that nature in November. I feel like bringing it, you could have had it last November, and that was a huge election, but instead you kind of pushed it off to March. I feel like that was kind of underhanded. I don't know any of you personally, but I do feel like the politics of Caducea County is kind of a big boys' club. That's my experience from the past. So I feel like the least you could do for the citizens is put it off until November, when more of us are aware, and maybe give us an exact list. We may not be totally abhorrent to T-splotch if we knew exactly what it was going for, and if we had confidence that you would get the project done. But remember, I couldn't just go into a bank and borrow money without an exact plan for it. And when I'm, my budget, when I'm over my budget, I have to look at it and I have to say, well, I got to get rid of stuff. I can't afford all this, and I really wish the county Commissioners would consider the same. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? Okay, we're going to move on to the meeting. First thing, Laura Ogden.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners. I am Laura Ogden, Colony Director, and I'm here to ask for the ASCAP license renewal. This is an annual fee. The amount this year has gone up just a little bit to $712, and that is based on the census data from Caducea County. This licensing fee pays for the background music that we play for public events, special events, the background music in the hallway. It pays for background music when you put somebody on hold on the phone. And this does cover Caducea County, it is a Caducea County license, so it does cover all of Caducea County for $712.
Do I have a motion for it? Do I have a say?
Say.
Any questions, Commissioner? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Jeremy Bryson, Deductive Change Order. So have a question.
Mr. Chairman, this is for approval for a Deductive Change Order to our FDR 2018 Reservment Project. The original contract with C.W. Matthews was for $1,888,917.15. After work was complete and all the quantities were measured and adjusted, we saved $53,169.24. So what we're asking is for you guys to do a change order to adjust for the actual contract amount, which is $1,835,747.91.
Do I have a motion to approve this Deductive Order?
So.
Say. Any questions? All in favor of approving, standing this Deductive Change Order, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to thank Jeremy for his hard work in giving that reduction, $53,000 period, reduction from the money bill or loan money. So thank you for that.
Got a comment up in Casey Lee's, but we'd like to congratulate her. She has 90-hour certification program with the Department of Environmental Protection today, and you got presented that a few weeks ago.
Great.
She did a good job.
Yeah, I'm sure I can hear it, sir.
The next item is for approval of a Ford Edge for, we had an invitation to bid back in January for a Ford Edge for Explorer. The bids were open on January 31st. We received several bids, and after everything was evaluated and everything taken into account, the staff recommended King Ford from Murphy, North Carolina for 2019 Ford Edge in the amount of $41,408.
Do I have a motion?
So.
Say.
I'll say.
Questions, all in here, Jeremy? Do you have any questions at this time?
But Jeremy, a lot of the cars you looked at, you associated Explorers, they could not give us a delivery time, am I right?
Yes, that's correct. I think there's an issue with, they're not manufacturing 2019s for some time, so there's some issues with availability on some of those.
Are trying to save one or many vendors, or we have better service, or better...
Yes, our fleet's set up where it's most of our fleet's forward, and so everything that we have, we came in three wives, we have specialized equipment, computer software, certified mechanics, things along those lines. It's more practical to stay within the same area.
So we do our own maintenance now?
Yeah.
And air shock.
Yes, we do all of our fleet.
Please, no comments before trying to have leave?
That's great, Mr. Chairman. We do all of our maintenance and house.
Liz, I'd like to ask, did anybody else have a question? Ralph Caldwell.
Mr. Wong.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
No.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Cutler.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Well, thank you. Tony Moore. Always a pleasure having you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Tony Moore. I'm Director of Elections. This request is for a new ongoing contract for Caducea County Elections in the City of Port-au-Prince. On March 8, 2017, we entered into a one-year trial basis to handle the City of Port-au-Prince election needs. It was excluding qualifying and collecting their ethics report. That agreement ended on December 21st, 2017. This request is for an ongoing contract, which means Caducea County Elections will handle all their election services, including qualifying, collecting their elected officials, candidates, ethics reports, and any and all special elections, elections of even an odd number of years. We'll actually handle every one of them. The Board of Elections approved this contract on January 8, 2019, and the City of Port-au-Prince also approved the contract January 4th. Caducea County will be compensated. In your pocket, you've got exhibits, AV and CD of the contract. If either party decides to terminate the agreement, we'll have to give each other a 90-day written notice, sorry. Do you have any questions?
Do I have a question? Do I have a question? Do I have any other questions, Mr. Moore?
I've spoken in there, this is world-class management, it's a true business.
Yes, we currently, we're already in contract with the City of Redding. We're now being in contract with the City of Port-au-Prince, so we would handle all the elections for the county, for the offices currently in our county.
Medical services.
That is correct. That is correct.
We do, we have them as a board, and we're not...
Yes, yes.
Thank you, we're not finished.
Any other questions? All in favor of approving the governor's brief, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, and all the members, the next item has to do with employee, or former employee request for a hardship distribution of the employee's portion of the contributions to the county pension plan prior to the expiration of the six-month waiting period. The existing county pension plan that's governed by IRS regulations requires that any employee that leaves the employment of the county must wait six months before they can receive their funds. There is precedent in two prior occasions where the Board of Commissioners has authorized the county to advance the employee's portion of the pension funds prior to the six-month waiting period. Upon approval by the Board of Commissioners and upon the employee signing a promissory note agreeing that the county will be repaid from their portion of the pension plus interest at the time it was released from the county's pension plan. The, the Board has received in their packet a hardship request from Zach Steele, who was a former firefighter for the county, requesting that the Board allow him to receive an advance of his employee portion of the pension plan. If the Board approves this request, Mr. Steele will have to sign a promissory note agreeing to repay that amount to the county plus six percent interest at the rate of six percent per annum, and that will be deducted from his portion of pension plans of full distribution. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do I have a motion? Second. Do I have a question?
Chad?
Yes, sir.
The individual, Mr. Steele, has to declare a hardship, so...
Correct.
There is no real definition of going a hardship business.
No, well, the only precedent this board has, there was terminal illness on one prior request this board approved, and the, another request that was approved. It's only happened twice, had to do with a former employee who was on the verge of losing their home due to foreclosure. They couldn't get these funds paid covered. But there is no, it's in the discretion of the Board.
Right.
On a case-by-case basis, there is no definition, that's it.
And in this case, the individual has claimed hardship?
Yes, I think there's an email in my packet where he outlines the nature of hardship.
No, I was saying, we will charge the six percent interest, which is required.
Yes, sir. The, it, this is an advance of county funds before the pension plan comes in, and so by law, you cannot advance taxpayer funds without receiving interest on those funds coming back. And without being able to ensure, we would control the money associated with that. The money would come in from American funds, which holds the pension funds. Carl or Michelle or Rachel would deduct the amount advanced plus interest at six percent, and that amount can be dispersed.
We did account any, or individual figure, or y'all have to draw a team, what that...
We did have to, uh, we had to prepare the resolution, prepare the agenda forms, prepare the promissory. It did not, that's not included in, in the, it would be built into the interest.
That's my, Chairman, that's my biggest thing. Compared to these others, I just think this could have risen, and then we start every month or two, we start getting a hardship being drawn out, but, uh, just don't think this later shows them up as a true hardship. That's all I've got.
Anybody else have any questions? Well, Liz, let's do a real call.
Commissioner Wong?
No.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Cutler?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
No.
Thank you. Ken, you are ready.
I'm ready, Mr. Chairman. Uh, what we have before the Board is a, an approval of authorization to allow the Tax Commissioner to write off certain delinquency accounts on the personal property tax bills. Uh, this resolution would apply only to personal property, and it would apply in a situation where someone opens a business, either a corporate account or an individual account, and the tax bill is generated. Then before that tax bill is paid, that business goes, um, goes busted. The assets get repossessed by creditors. The owner is not in the county, and he can't collect the money from the owner. In situations like this in the past, that delinquency has just carried over from tax year to tax year to tax year, and it's never collected and it's never going to be collected. And it sort of enplaces the digest by saying that we've got this money out there on our digest that we know that we're never gonna get. It does require the Tax Commissioner to certify that it's not collected, that he can't collect it against the owner, he can't collect it against the partner.
Thank you, my friend, that's good. Gonna keep you recording. You'll swathe, y'all say.
You hear, that's what the, uh, the resolution would require the Tax Commissioner to investigate before I'm going to certify and determine if there's no property here that we can levy on, and also that the owner is not, can't be found to actually levy a fine against the owner of the tax.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do you have a question, Mr. Moore? Dale's office kept up with how the says, or everybody's done the due diligence.
Yes, it, it was signed off in the tax system's office.
Anything else, Jim? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, they've been on for record. Good to have you here.
Thank you. It's good to be here. Thank you. We have a three-thousand point presentation. Uh, my name is Julia Willingham. Uh, I'm with Catoosa County Cooperative Extension. Uh, we're here tonight because we've had quite a few changes in our office, and we wanted to give a report on what's been going on in our office and just report on kind of what our services are in, um, Catoosa County. Uh, so just as a background, Extension has been a part of Catoosa County since the nineteen thirties. In fact, we've been in the same building, in the same location since that time, which is kind of fun. Uh, Cooperative Extension is a part of the University of Georgia and provides public services, um, to counties across Georgia, so we're representing Catoosa County in that aspect. UGA Extension, um, is a forefront in research and education and bringing that knowledge from the university to the county level to better our local communities. Uh, there are three main divisions in Extension. We have agriculture and natural resources, which we call AMR, then family and consumer sciences, as well as our four-H youth development program. Our county office here in Catoosa mainly focuses on agriculture and natural resources and our four-H youth programming. Um, so over the past twenty-six years, Charles Lancaster has been the face and name of Catoosa County Extension. Um, unfortunately for us, I feel like he has, he retired in May, um, but luckily, he does visit, and he's also a volunteer in our office. Um, so over the past couple years, I've been here for two years, we have more employees than we've ever had in our office, and so we're gonna take a time to introduce ourselves. Okay, so let's start with myself. Again, I'm Julia Willingham, and I was the four-H agent in the county, um, until this past pretty much December. Um, and so now I am the AMR agent, which is agriculture and natural resources, as well as the county extension coordinator. So I'm kind of the supervisor of these folks here in our office. Uh, we also have Caleb Milliken. He wants to say that we want to say something.
Laura.
Okay. Caleb Milliken, he was hired here, um, in our county to oversee our four-H program back in December, so he's still pretty new, but not to four-H, just our office. Um, we have David Buckler. He is not here tonight with us, but he is our AmeriCorps member. Um, AmeriCorps is something that's pretty cool to have in our county. It's a national program, but it, um, in Georgia, four-H has the AmeriCorps grant, and, um, they direct, sorry, they have direct service to youth in our county, um, and he's been doing wonderful in our office, and he came on with us in September. Then we have Ms. Roberta Pepper. We, we put up her, she's the overqualified part-time four-H program assistant. Um, she has been wonderful, and she's been with us since November. Um, and then we have Mary Beth Tola, who's our secretary, who's been in our office for seven years. So she has seen, um, she's been here the longest. She's also not here with us. But as you can see, we have quite a few new people that have been here just in the past six, seven months. So, one of our divisions is agricultural and natural resources, and some of the services that we provide in that area, we do soil, water, and forage testing, as well as radon testing. We also do distance diagnostics in insect and disease, as well as forestry and tree disorders and plant and weed identification. We also help folks with their pesticide licensing, or pesticide applicator licensing, um, something also in general that we do. We provide farmers and homeowners with information, as well as educational opportunities. So information could be like, let's say somebody would like to, um, start a backyard chicken flock in there in their house. Okay, we have information on how to start that, what chicken feed they might need, anything like that. We also offer educational opportunities. So as being a new AMR agent, I haven't really had the opportunity to start any educational opportunities yet, but, um, there's plenty that are around Catoosa County that our Catoosa County locals have participated in. Like last fall, there was a master cattleman's, um, classes that was in Woodfield County in Dalton, um, that quite a few people participated in, which is wonderful. Um, another thing that we do is we do site visits to investigate any agriculture or environmental issues. So we do get quite a few calls where we do home visits, visiting folks, maybe they have something weird going on with the grass in their yard. They something weird on a tree, something like that. We can come and investigate, and we have the lead with specialists at UGA to figure out what's going on so we can fix the problem. So, some things that are new in our ag program since I've started, we are now doing a pine tip moth survey with the College of, or with the Worno School of Forestry and Natural Resources. Um, pine tip moth is a invasive pest that's actually been in the state for a while, but they're just doing another survey to see its distribution. So we have one, um, bug trap is actually located behind Wood Station Elementary that we'll be checking all year round, and we just put it up, so that's kind of exciting. Uh, next, we also have a hay and forage study that's going on with one of our local farmers. His name is James Lyles, and on his farm, we have put, um, a bunch of different side-by-side plots, um, with different types of hay or clover, um, and looking at how those grow with different pesticide uses or different seed cultivations. Uh, but that study will result in a field day, looking at the end results in April, and we're lucky to have an extension specialist, Dr. Dennis Can Popple, who will be coming to our county for that field day to go over that study. So those are just a couple of things that are going on in our ag program, which are pretty cool. And next, I will give the floor to Mr. Caleb for our four-H program.
All right. I'll try to make this as clear as possible. Uh, so, Julia had mentioned that I'm not new to four-H. I've actually been in Chautauqua County for the last four and a half years, doing programming there. And so I built up a really, really big and successful program there. We're looking to do the same thing here. Julia laid a really good foundation for where we, we started, from where we started. And so what we're doing is, uh, we're taking that and we're growing that into different things. And so as four-H agents, our job is youth development. We're the largest youth development organization in the state. Four-H is the largest youth development organization in the world. And so our job is to, if we grow, uh, we always like to say grow in four-H, if we grow good kids, and they're gonna grow into good citizens. And so that's one of our goals. And so, um, the past of four-H was the corn club and tomato club, uh, which eventually came together to form the four-H club. And so when we think about the, uh, past of four-H, a lot of us think very rule-based, um, organization. And we do still do a lot in agriculture, but, uh, we've actually expanded out. And so you'll see us do a lot of service leadership and citizenship projects. And so, uh, that's where, when I say we're trying to grow good citizens, that's where that comes in. And I'm gonna talk about some of those leadership opportunities that we're actually working on right now that are national programming. Uh, and students here in Catoosa are actually working on those. And so, uh, we actually have competitions, different competitions we do. Uh, for instance, we just now came back from a fifth grade competition, uh, Georgia Hollands College. It's a public speaking competition with fifty-four different categories that students can compete in. Uh, we have over seventy-five youth from Catoosa County participate in that. We actually have the second-largest county out of fourteen counties that were there. And so we have a large group that was competing in that, and they actually can compete in that all the way, uh, through high school. So it was a really good opportunity for them. Uh, we'll do poultry judging, so we love chickens. Uh, and it's really neat to see, uh, kids who aren't, um, you know, Catoosa County has moved in the last twenty years from being, uh, more rule-based to, uh, we're getting more urban-based. And so for students to see chickens and get to interact with them, uh, it's really exciting for some of them to do. And it's my favorite judging team that I ju, uh, that I, that I coach. I love it. And so, uh, we'll do that. We also do a code, we're gonna start a coding club, uh, where, uh, students will actually get to create their own apps or their own games using coding. Uh, and then we'll also, we have cotton ball consumer judges, a consumer judging event. We also, um, have a safe program. And so it's shooting awareness, fun, education. And we have a BB air rifle team right now, and, uh, we're actually meeting at the Grateful Gym, uh, precinct gym at six o'clock on Mondays, and students are shooting. We shoot four positions, standing, and sitting prone. And, uh, it's a five-meter target, and so, uh, ten targets at five meters. And so they're learning those skills of, as I always like to say, the best gun controls to teach someone how to safely use a gun. And so whereas a lot of programs in the, in this country are cutting out a lot of shooting sports activities for youth, uh, Georgia four-H continues to grow and grow and grow. And so I'm looking at, we have BB now. As these students get older, we're looking at creating a twenty-two rifle team for the, for, um, high school, and then possibly even getting into shotgun modified track team for seventh grade through high school. So we're trying, we're looking at expanding that safe program. Of course, we still have livestock shows, so dairy beef and, uh, swine, as well as sheep and goat are always, uh, things that we can work on in, uh, the Georgia National Fair, as well as the Junior National Show, which is coming up at the end of February. We're hoping to take a few students down there to see that. We do have one student here in Catoosa County, uh, Tanner Mantick, who shows swine in, uh, Georgia four-H. So, uh, we have that, community events and, and projects, we've been talking about a little bit. Uh, and then our base program. So we meet with, um, roughly around fifteen hundred fifth-grade students every month. We have over forty in-school club meetings we do a lot. Uh, it's a pretty big number. Uh, so we're there, uh, we're, we're doing, and our in-school programming, uh, we do some STEM science-based program. Uh, here in Catoosa County, it's kind of a split between social studies and science right now. And so we want to come into science classes and fill the gap that teachers may be needing to help fill. And so we talk about inherited traits and, and different things like that. And then we also work on CCRPI lessons, which are basically teaching life skills. Uh, you'd be surprised at how many even high schools don't know how to correctly write a check. And so we come in, and we've been teaching fifth graders how to write a check. Uh, we've also been talking about I, careers such as marketing careers or IT careers, so different things they may not see on a regular basis. Uh, they may not know what a long officer is, and we're coming there and we talk about finance, and they're learning that those people that are in the office, when you walk into the bank, uh, that never, that never get to see them come out. Those are long officers and what their jobs are. And so we want to teach life skills, and we also want to teach STEM-based learning, because that's where the state is really kind of pushing right now. And then our outside-the-classroom activities. Uh, basically, all of our events are outside the classroom, uh, but we still do camp. Uh, we do county council meeting each month where our, uh, four agents can come together from the different schools. Uh, 'cause I've, I've left from, from Chautauqua, I have four elementary schools. Now I'm going into eight elementary schools. So it's really important for those students, though, who don't get to see each other, to come together and to share their interests and to get to and they're sharing the interest and they're getting to spend time together. So when we go to camp at Rock Eagle this summer, because some of you may have went to camp when you were in 4H in school. And so we'll be taking roughly about 60 students to camp this summer just at Rock Eagle. We also have other camping programs. But Georgia 4H has the best program, camping program in the nation. And that's evident by how many people want to be a part of it. We even have counselors come in from other states that want to be a part of our program. And so we do a lot of things outside the classroom as well. Of course, most of that is at no cost to students. A few things like camp will have a cost, but we try to do everything we can to keep kids active without having to pay out of pocket. We obviously have roadblocks, just like in any county, just like anywhere in the state or the nation that you go, there's a roadblock. Family structure is a roadblock. Family structure is not really the same as it was 20 years ago. We deal with a lot of single parent homes and grandparents raising children homes, whether it's any county, especially in northwest Georgia. And so that's just something that we see as a roadblock that we do what we can to help implement programs for those students to be able to come and we're an all-inclusive club, so we want everybody to be a part of it. And we also, with transportation, transportation is our number one roadblock. A lot of that has to do with, you know, a single parent home. Someone mentioned earlier, somebody out in America, two jobs. And so we do provide transportation for every activity we do, even if we have to go. We have, we made house calls before to pick students up and make sure they get to where they need to be. And so that's our job. Anything that we can do to provide youth with a mentor or an opportunity to be involved in something outside of school, that's what we want to do. Sports are 365 days a year, and we all know that. Used to not be that way, it is now. We're now school clubs. Students can only once or twice a month, after they've been in school. And so a lot of things we do are outside the club, outside of school. And so that can be a roadblock for us, testing requirements, parental involvement is hard for parents when they're so busy to be involved in everything that's going on with kids now. And then getting the word out, so I can talk to you today, but not everybody hears this. I can post it on Facebook, but not everybody sees that. And so I think that's in a world today where not everybody reads the paper on Wednesdays. We get into a lot of issues with getting the word out about events and stuff. And then of course, funding for everyone, county, state, federal, funding is funding. And so we don't get money from the state. Well, locally, we do have a county here who weren't able to provide a building and things like that for us. But most of all, our fundraising, funding is done through private fundraising. And so we do do a lot of fundraising. Our students do fundraising and activities like that. And so the future of Catoosa County 4H, so our goals and expectations. Obviously, social media. If you can't, if, we're really hitting hard on social media. David Buckler, who's not here right now, has really done a great job with making us some awesome flyers all the time and puts them out there. And so we've created a new Facebook page, so go follow Catoosa County 4H. And we'll be posting things on there, newsletter activities that we're doing as well as Instagram. And then of course, all the kids, you never know about Snapchat. So in-school involvement, like I said, we're doing STEM. We'll also be in October, we're going to start doing Unity Day. So it's an anti-boating day that's in October. So I hear some people, sometimes parents, say that kids have it easier now than they used to. And it's really hard for me to explain sometimes that they don't. Because at least, at least when somebody was mean to us or if somebody was going to bully somebody, they'd physically tell you or put their hands on you when we were young. Now, with social media apps and with the internet and with Facebook and things like that, nobody has to be in the same state as you. And so there's a lot of things we see that we want, students, you know, the numbers came up the other day that we have, our teenagers now in the United States are more depressed than they've ever been in in the history of the United States. And so we're seeing numbers like this and we want kids to know that they're not alone about stuff and that, you know, we're an all-inclusive club. And so we're doing, we're going to do other activities like this in school so that it helps us as far as promotion and also it helps kids to know that, you know, somebody's there. And so that one's kind of personal for me because I had some stu-, I had a student of mine who one time in Chautauqua County handed me a set of razors one time. We had a long meeting one day. And she said, "I'm good, I don't need this anymore." And so moments like that remind you that we're working with kids. And kids can be very influenced about things. And for them to have a positive view in their life is what we're trying to do. And we're lucky to have an office full of positive role models for these kids. For mentoring and tutoring, we're working on mentoring younger students, our seniors, high school level students. They're working on mentoring the younger ones. And so they want them to see the opportunities they've been able to do and then to pass that along. We went up to the Chamber Center for Children, which is a 24-hour daycare in Chattanooga. And it's a humbling experience to go there and see. And it means a lot to our kids to see that. It helps them to see, a lot of times you don't appreciate where you're at while you're there. And this helps the students to appreciate the homes that they get to go to and the opportunities that they have. Community activities, you're going to see us a lot more out in the community. I hope that after this, in the next few months, our next few months, I can't go to Walmart without a fifth grader yelling at me. That's always my goal. And so you're going to see us out about a different community event. We may not be setting a booth up or anything like that, but we'll be around. We'll be walking around and being involved in the community. And then we want to know unique needs in our area because our job is to be the most valued to youth. And our job is to create value where maybe somebody else is missing it. And so that's what we want, that's what we want our kids to grow and do. And so right now, we have two students, Emily Longbrook, who is a 10th grade student, and McKinley Pepper is a 7th grade student, who will be going with myself and Ms. Roberta to Columbus, Ohio on February the 28th for three days for a training. It's a digital ambassadors training with 4H, National 4H is teamed up with Microsoft, so it's through a Microsoft brand. And they're going to learn about the, we have a digital literacy gap in Catoosa County. And basically what that means is, for our county, is we have really good internet service, but we have a lot of people that don't know how to use it or don't use it. And so our job is going to be, they're going to go up there, they're going to learn it. We're going to be the facilitators, we're basically going to let them run wild. And they're going to teach classes to people, so maybe parents or grandparents, about how to log on to your students or your grandkids' portal through the school. So you can check grades, make sure they're doing their study island or their Excel. Or maybe somebody just wants to learn how to work Facebook so they can keep up with pictures of relatives in, you know, Ohio or in, or, you know, wherever, and Texas. And so we're going to have them, they're going to do some classes and teach people. And so we're putting the, we're putting the control in their hands. And we're letting them be the leaders of this project. And so it's an awesome thing we've done. After this, when we get into August and September, we'll have another group of two or three that'll actually be able to go to another training. And so it's really exciting. And then of course, we want your ideas. So if you see something in the community that needs to be addressed, that's something you think youth would be good at. You know, we, they have leadership and action projects where they create something that's a need in the community, they can fill that need, and then they're able to present their project on that. And so we have a lot of students that want to do things like that. But it, you know, just like we didn't, when you're 14, 15 years old, do you really know what the needs are in your community? And so without your input and without you guys telling us stuff, we may not know that that's a need. But we're really excited about this digital ambassadors and this Microsoft project. And then I always like to put a final thought on something. And it's hard, just so you know, that was really fast, as fast as I've probably done one of these presentations. I didn't want to, I want everybody to enjoy this beautiful day, so, but it, it's hard to sum up 4H in a five or 10-minute presentation. My answer for when somebody asks me what 4H does, I've given 50 different answers in the last two years. Because there's something for everybody. With, if kids are farm kids and they want to do culture judging, then it's there. If they want to learn how to work more in IT, it's there. So everything you can think, I always like to say, we're Chautauqua County, because, sorry, I can see us still getting to have it. We're Catoosa County Extension and anything else you think you might need. Because that's what we are. And so I always like to leave with a final thought. And my final thought is that if you believe in absolute honesty that you're doing everything you can, do more. And so, thank you guys, I hope to see you. You're always welcome to stop by, all just come in and just talk to us, chit chat, we're there, that's what we're here for. Most of all these programs Julia's talked about, anything really, you know, there's some soul samples, there's, you know, a few dollar costs there, but all of those services we can provide you are free. And so that's what we're here for. We're here to be an asset, a resource, and to be a bounty to you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good presentation. Now, Rachel? Appreciate if you could make the financial report.
Really, I could go after that.
We probably should have let you go first.
Because you're talking about favorable and unfavorable.
It's good to eat, though.
So the first one is the financial report for the third month ended December. Revenue before other financing sources and operating transfers for the three months ended December was $6,835,410 or 25.29% of budget. Therefore, exceeded the budget to revenue by $78,058 or 1.16%. Revenue was favorable prior year, $324,303 or 4.98%. Expenditures for other financing uses and operating transfers out for the three-month period were $6,192,226 or 23.73% of budget. Therefore, less than budget expenditures by $331,256 or 5.08%. Expenditures were unfavorable prior year, $441,157 or 7.67%. After other financing sources and operating transfers out, revenue exceeded expenditures by $182,463, favorable to budget, $482,463. But unfavorable prior year, $122,800.
We collect $482,163. $482,463. Revenue exceeded expenditures. So we did blow it out. All right, the next.
The next one is the revenue report for the fourth month ended January. And loss receipts for the first four months of this quarter 2019 exceeded the budget, $274,969 or 11.74%. And exceeded the same period actual for prior year, $186,030 or 7.65%. Cumulative loss receipts for the most recent 12-month period exceeded the prior 12-month period, $454,890 or 6.51%. Current month exceeded the same period prior year, $36,036,710 or 5.44%. The loss receipts for the 54-month period of the 2014 loss filing were $44,873,542 or 83.10% of budget. Loss receipts for the most recent 12-month exceeded the prior 12-month, $648,141 or 6.51%. Current month exceeded the same period prior year, $52,430 or 5.13%.
What's right of good at 4H?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for 4H. It's a moral observation that 83% of budget is probably one of the highest, which is going to be bad for our.
Are we talking at first loss?
Yes, at first loss.
Yeah, I think we've been at 8%.
So this is one of the highest marks we've gotten?
I think so.
Great. Congratulations.
At this time, we have no business, no young, new business. Chad, you're already there.
This is the portion of the agenda for the board to take whatever action it needs necessary on the proposed amendment to the definition section of the county county law and code to incorporate the definition of a post-homem state statute into our ordinance. We have to answer the questions.
Do they have a motion to approve?
Second.
This is pretty much just as combined with state regulations.
Correct. But honestly, whether we put this in our ordinance or not, it's still a state law. The reason we're putting it in there is because, as students, we're about to follow the compliance.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At this time, I believe it enters Commissioner's comments, gentlemen.
Congratulations, all the new employees and the hosts. It's kind of in this district bureau of the other counties also, a lot of retirement programs. Congratulations. And we've got a lot of, yeah, we're new offices. Not just a new office, in case that one comes.
We are on 43 Maple Street. We are across the street from the gas pumps next to the courthouse. It's the easiest way to find us, so it's clear we're in a two-story brick building across from the gas pumps. And for Martin Luther King Junior Day, the students created a garden in the front and some birdhouses. So, and so it's pretty colorful.
I just want to say thank you to everybody for coming out and exercising your civic right. I think it's awesome that we've got this many people here and we've got people that come back time after time to come to you. So thank you to everyone of you and thank you for letting me be a part of it. Just want to echo those same thoughts. Thank you everybody for coming, I appreciate your thoughts. And November 14th is soon, quickly approaching, so don't forget your loved ones this time.
Are you stuck in it if you're watching?
I was going to say, I want to welcome my wife, Darlene, who attended tonight, so thank you for coming, appreciate that. So anyway, thank you all for coming and have a blessed day.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out and showing your love for the county and your complaints and hopefully you can do a better job and make everybody happy as you can, the most busy, busy to make everybody happy. But I want to thank 4H for the job you do for our youth in the county. I was involved in your organization when I went through school and it did teach me a lot about my character and things from my life, you know, that I did learn. And, you know, I was lucky that I had two parents at home and I know things have changed a lot. And I just love to see the youth succeed in our county and that is our future. And thanks for what you do and pray that God keep blessing our county and our youth. Thank you very much.
I'd like to reiterate everybody's comments, I do thank y'all for coming out. But I wanted to address the sewer in, the city of Ringel did put that sewer in. We will go out and look at your road, the city does the sewer, so. And we've got a couple of roads that have been butchered that we're having to address. Unfortunately, that's part of what we deal with when one municipality handles one part of the project and sometimes do that always, you take care of it. We will look at that. And I guess that's everybody. I guess now we will go into exactly for legal personnel and lands for this week, like, all the way up.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chairman Hinner?
Yes.
Commissioner Cutler?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
All in favor of coming out and taking a session, say aye.
Aye.
At this time, we have nothing for all the sessions. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
You can get a roll call if you are.